Twenty twenty-two. Meeting, regular meeting of the Gardner City Council will come to order. The clerk will please call the roll. And she's not. She's not on. Oh, there she is.
Hi, I'm here. Are we waiting for anyone else?
Um, I just called the meeting to order. Is Counselor Boone or is that part joining us?
He is. He's in the hallway. Um, I think he's trying to set up right now.
Well, we'll wait a couple of minutes for Counselor Boone to join us.
All right. If you can give me another one, give me one second.
Ready? I turn video on.
Okay, we are live on YouTube, live on G E T V. The meeting has been called to order. The clerk, please call the roll.
Um, Counselor LeFou. Counselor Boudreaux. Counselor Craig Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Ronald Cormier.
Present.
Counselor General Lawrence.
Present.
Counselor Harder. Counselor He.
Present.
Counselor Matt.
Present.
Counselor Tyros.
Present.
Counselor Walsh.
Present.
President, President.
We will begin with the oath of office for Counselor-elect James Boone. I have also a couple of announcements first. Tonight's meeting was moved earlier today from meeting in person to meeting remotely via Zoom due to the freezing rain and ice that was expected this evening. This decision was made in consideration of concerns that that were expressed to me by some city councillors as well as my own concerns. And I believe it was the best decision for safety of the city councillors and those from the public interested in attending the meeting this evening to go remote. I understand and appreciate that in the past, there have been feet of snow on the ground at times and council meetings were still held in person. However, since meeting remotely has become an option, I believe it is reasonable to use that option when safety could possibly be at risk. And I want to thank the city council and the public watching this evening for their understanding and flexibility relative to this decision. And then we also, with that being said, I would like to acknowledge that Counselor-elect James Boone is with us this evening. He is going to be taking his oath of office in person at City Hall with Clerk, City Clerk Sirafan this evening. Both Counselor-elect Boone and Clerk Sirafan felt comfortable traveling to City Hall in this weather and made the decision to do so at their discretion. State law requires that the oath of office must be administered in the presence of the city clerk and cannot be administered virtually. Also, the oath must be administered during a city council meeting in the presence of the city council. And since state law allows our meetings to be held virtually, the city council is recognized as present this evening. So with that, Counsel, Counselor Boone and Clerk Sirafan.
Want to come in here, Jimmy? No, not you. Can you see everybody?
Yep.
We're all ready. Please write one. I speak your name.
I, James Boone.
You solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
So faithfully and impartially.
That I'll say faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of city councillor.
Perform the duties of city councillor.
According to the best my abilities.
According to the best my abilities.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, please rise to recite the opening prayer and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, we thank.
We thank thee for bringing us together this evening. Inspire us toward the deeds. Sound decisions. And direct us toward the attainment of good civic. Pray thee to bless.
Protect all the people.
All the people who are a city and to so guide and inspire us.
To weave a.
May deliberate in harmony and harmony.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands. One nation under God, indivisible.
With liberty and justice.
And justice.
Announcement of open meeting recordings. Subject to the law passed signed by the governor on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. This meeting of the City of Gardner City Council will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so by the following manner: Watching on the City of Gardner YouTube page and G E T V Channel Eight. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post to the city's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting, and that also includes the City of Gardner's YouTube page. As a reminder, since this meeting is being conducted remotely via Zoom, there will be a roll call vote on all motions. We will begin with the reading in the minutes of the December sixth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting and the January third, twenty twenty-two regular meeting. Is there a motion? Counselor Ron Cormier.
Madam President, I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of those meetings and accept them as presented.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh to waive the reading of the minutes and accept them as presented. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone.
Epstein.
Counselor Boudreaux.
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor General Lawrence.
Yes.
Counselor He.
Yes.
Counselor Matt.
Yes.
Counselor Tyros.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
President, President.
Yes.
My name.
Motion passes. There are no public hearings. Communications from the mayor appointments, item number one zero five nine eight, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Christine Oliver Kumar to the position of city assessor for term expiring January nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Counselor Tyros.
Thank you, Madam President. The appointments committee met with Ms. Kumar and the mayor and discussed her service to the city as city assessor. Ms. Kumar has experience working in the assessors departments of the towns of Shoesbury, Littleton, and Lunenburg. She has previously worked in the city as an administrative coordinator in the D P W and our assessor's office. The mayor spoke of her willingness to learn and great service working with city residents thoroughly and timely. As an example of this, her recent completion of her state assessor's certificate. The committee voted unanimously to recommend. Therefore, I move the appointment be certified.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor Mack to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone.
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux.
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor General Lawrence.
Yes.
Counselor He.
Yes.
Counselor Matt.
Yes.
Counselor Tyros.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
President, President.
Yes.
Ten years.
The motion passes. Item one zero five nine nine, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of James Wood to the position of Airport Commission Member for term expiring January nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Counselor Tyros.
Thank you, Madam President. The appointments committee met with Mr. Wood and the mayor and discussed Mr. Wood's desire to serve the city as an airport commission member. Mr. Wood is a lifelong resident and business owner who has been licensed aviator since nineteen seventies and a volunteer at the airport since then eighteen eighties. As a current user of the airport, he has a passion for its success and further development. Mr. Woods is recommended by the former airport commissioner, Mr. Bonk. The committee voted unanimously to recommend. Therefore, I move the appointment be certified.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor Boone to approve, to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone.
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux.
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor General Lawrence.
Yes.
Counselor He.
Yes.
Counselor Matt.
Yes.
Counselor Tyros.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
President, President.
Yes.
I have ten years.
Motion passes. Item one zero six zero zero, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Robert R. Schwartz, Jr. to the position of Airport Commission Member for a term expiring January nineteenth, twenty twenty. It's cut off on here. Is it twenty twenty-five? Mayor Nicholson.
Yes, it is, Madam President.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Tyros.
Thank you, Madam President. The appointments committee met with Mr. Schwartz and the mayor and discussed Mr. Schwartz's desire to serve the city as airport commission member. Mr. Schwartz is a local business owner who has spent much time at the airport over the years and is very passionate about the city better leveraging the airport with events and more utilization. Mr. Schwartz is interested in learning more about certifications and training to best serve the city. The committee voted unanimously to recommend. Therefore, I move the appointment be certified.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor Mack to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone.
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux.
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor General Lawrence.
Yes.
Counselor He.
Yes.
Counselor Matt.
Yes.
Counselor Tyros.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
And President, President.
Yes.
Wait, ten years.
Motion passes. One zero six zero one, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of David Erich Hart to the position of Airport Commission Member for term expiring January nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Counselor Tyros.
Thank you, Madam President. The appointments committee met with Mr. Erich Hart and the mayor and discussed Mr. Erich Hart's desire to serve the city as airport commission member. Mr. Erich Hart is a local business owner and current user of the airport where he stores his airplane. He spoke passionately about how great of an asset the airport is to the city and how well it was constructed. The mayor stated that Mr. Erich Hart was recommended by the former airport commissioner, Mr. Bonk, and the committee voted unanimously to recommend. Therefore, I move the appointment be certified.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, seconded, I'm sorry, motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor Mack to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Boudreaux.
Counselor, through the president to the chair, Counselor Tyros, is Mr. Erich Hart a resident of our community or just a business, or not just, or is his business in our community, I guess, is my question.
Counsel Tyros.
Madam President, if I may, we did not ask Mr. Erich Hart if he was a resident of the city.
Uh, Mayor Nicholson, do you have anything?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I don't believe he is a resident of the city. However, the city has not adopted the sections of the general law that require our appointees to be residents of the city. That is a section of the general law that is a local option. The city, to this point, has not adopted that section of the local option. And in fact, several of our commissioners on different other boards and commissions are not Gardner residents, but are local business owners or have some other form of connection to the city of Gardner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Boudreaux, did you have anything further?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that I do not have any ill will towards anyone for not being a member of our community. There are plenty of people and business owners and volunteers, just a number of things that could make someone a member of our community without living here in town, in the city. I just wanted to know for my own information. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? Counselor, I'm sorry, Clerk Sirafan.
Uh, I just wanted to let you know I do have the point keys here to do their oath.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussions? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone.
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux.
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor General Lawrence.
Yes.
Counselor He.
Yes.
Counselor Matt.
Yes.
Counselor Tyros.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
And President, President.
Yes.
All right, ten years.
Motion passes. At this time, I'm going to ease us the meeting so that the members of the Airport Commission who are at City Hall right now can be sworn in. And I will, um, call the meeting back to order after the swearing-in is completed.
Perfect time, Madam President. Lights went out on me.
Hopefully, we'll see soon. Let that go.
Recording stopped.
Eric, your fan can is is Council Boone. I'm going to call the meeting back to order as Council Boone in the in the area. There he is, okay.
Recording in progress.
Okay, the meeting is now recording and we are continuing to be live on YouTube. And on G E T V. I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. I ordinances. Item number one zero six zero two, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner's section eight, chapter three ninety entitled Fire Department Fee Schedule. Report from the Finance Committee, Counselor Ron Cormier.
Finance Committee has had this with us for a while. The fire chief did present it and he's presented a lot of documentation comparing our fees with other communities. And did inform us that the fee structure is capped actually by state law. Because of its overreaching importance and because we want to move this along, Finance Committee recommended that this we make a motion. To recommend that that this be sent to the council committee as a whole, so that the fire chief can report to all of us at one time before we vote on it. And I so moved.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor General Lawrence. To bring item number one zero six zero two to to discuss as a committee of the whole for the whole council. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Boone.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'd like to request if we can get a current fee and a new fee in in a table form. There there is some for some items, but there's many that are not showing what's current and what's what's new. It would be easier for us to, at least for me, to be able to see the differences. So that's a request I'd like to make through the to the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Counselor. Mayor Nicholson.
Thank you very much, Madam President. To answer Council Boone's question, the item that's included in the packet that has the comparison, if there is no existing fee comparison there, that means that that item has been added through state statute for us to be required to. Charge for, but is not in the existing city code because that inspection requirement was added after the time that the code. Was adopted by the city as part of the state's two thousand and fifteen update of the state's fire code. Thank you. But we can still get a document that's updated that shows that more what is new, what is not. But right now, if you look at what's in the existing packet, if there is no item listed under the existing fee, but under the proposed fee, that was something that was added in two thousand and fifteen, we're required to inspect for, but don't currently have a fee associated with that application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson. Counselor Boone.
Yeah, if I can follow on, the first page is smoke detector inspections, and I don't see that as being new, and it doesn't have a current. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion?
Last thing, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for offering to get the put that together. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll. Counselor Boone.
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux.
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor General Lawrence.
Yes.
Counselor He.
Yes.
Counselor Matt.
Yes.
Counselor Tyros.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes.
Can you? The motion passes. Item one zero six zero three, an ordinance to amend sections of the code of the city of Gardner, chapter three ninety entitled Fees. Report from the Finance Committee, Counselor Ron Cormier.
Again, because of the similarity of this process with the prior one, Finance Committee felt that it should be referred to council committees as a whole, so that we can all hear the same report from the building commissioner. And I so moved.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor General Lawrence to refer the item to the committee of the whole. Is there discussion on the motion?
Madam President.
Counselor Boone.
Similar to my last request, if we could also have a table of current and new for the billing inspector fees. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? The clerk, Counselor Matt.
I'm just confused as to what Counselor Boone's referring to, because for the fire department in the building, I thought there was a table in there, it says current and proposed. So I just want to clarify that. I believe it is in our packet.
I think this. Counselor Boone.
Yeah, Counselor Mac, the first couple pages do not have a current and new. There is further on down, it does show current and new. Unless I've got a different version than you have.
Through the chair, Counselor Boone, we, but it's further down, it is listed, we all have the same copy, but it is listed in our packet, you just have to go further down in it. But it does list the proposed and the and the current. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Boone, does that answer your question? Does that address it?
I'd still like to have the table put together, so it's right with on top of each other, makes it much easier, just like the third and fourth section, and the mayor offered to do that, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll. Counselor Boone.
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux.
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor General Lawrence.
Yes.
Counselor He.
Yes.
Counselor Matt.
Yes.
Counselor Tyros.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
And President. Yes. Can you? Motion passes. Item one zero six zero four, an ordinance to amend chapter five sixty seven of the code of the city of Gardner entitled Streets and Sidewalks. Report from the Finance Committee, Counselor General Lawrence.
Thank you, Madam President. We are in the Finance Committee, as well as our packet here, within the seat of a letter from Gardner Square Two President, Hattie Bertram, concerned about the snow removal on the sidewalks in downtown Gardner. There has, in this recent storm, some difficulty getting by on the sidewalks. The business, the property owners are required to clear the sidewalks, and the fine structure currently in place is low when compared to other municipalities. There's a lack of an incentive to actually shovel the the snow and some of the sidewalk is not removed. It's the cost to hire someone to do it is well above maybe a hundred twenty, hundred dollars. The cost of the first offense is twenty five dollars. The cost to the city to send out the bill is actually more than the fine itself. The building commissioners pay, takes them about thirty minutes to complete the process, do a lot of documentation, as well as to send out an eight dollar certified, plus eight dollars in of the certified mail, which is required. So this would just be an update to the fee structure of current. You know, for business, most businesses, it wouldn't be a change of anything, they they currently clear their sidewalks. However, those who do not, did we assign that it would be appropriate for the for not clearing it. It was brought up to the, again, it is the building owner that's responsible, not the tenant, so necessarily the business that's there would be, the businesses there wouldn't be fined, it would be the building owner. The Finance Committee voted to approve this three oh, and I moved to pass the amendment to chapter, moved to pass an ordinance to amend chapter five sixty seven of the code of the city of Gardner entitled Streets and Sidewalks.
Second. Motion made by Counselor General Lawrence, seconded by Counselor Cormier to to pass the ordinance. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Boone.
Thank you, Madam President. What what about the vacant properties? Well, I guess it's not up to the business that's renting the property or using the property. But do we attach something to the the owner, or we send the vacant landlord a bill, or is that how that works?
Mayor Nicholson, do you have an answer for Counselor Boone?
Absolutely, Madam President. If a building is still is vacant, but it has an owner of record, the prop, the fines do go to the person whose name is on the property record card. That is something that the city can lean against the property as well, as we do with other different bills that we put out through the city, through the nuisance ordinance process as well. This is all, that's, this process is outlined in the city's blighted nuisance and abandoned vacant building ordinances. That is something that we can always go for, because again, this is with the city and the landlord and the property owner, not with the city and any particular tenant. Anything that's between the tenant and the landlord is between the two of them, not with the city.
Sorry.
That is, it's a it's a difficult motion sensor at that spot, but yes, that's the. The answer to that one is it goes to the landlord who's there.
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson, I'll get the light in a second.
Yeah, and I should also say too, for properties owned by the Gardner redevelopment authority or the city in this area, the D P W takes care of those sidewalks. Thank you.
Mayor Nicholson, Counselor Boone.
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Inspector Clarke, please call the president. This is to send this to first printing, because it's no ordinance.
The motion is to. Okay, so the motion, the motion is to send the item to first printing. Okay. Counselor Boone.
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux.
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor General Lawrence.
Yes.
Counselor He.
Yes.
Counselor Matt.
Yes.
Counselor Tyros.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
And President. Yes. Can you? Motion passes. Orders, item one zero six zero five, an order appropriating twenty two thousand two hundred dollars from free cash to South Gardner Fire Station abate and design project account. Report from the Finance Committee, Counselor General Lawrence.
Thank you, Madam President. Finance Committee also met on this item, which had been on the agenda for some time. It is a request for appropriation appropriation for design replacement of the the current boiler that is in the South Gardner Fire Station. I actually had the opportunity to take a tour over the summer, it is a enormous pieces, piece of machinery, if you will, made part of the size of a Volkswagen. The current boiler, current situation is that it is running, but has received a failing inspection by the state. When it's not running, it actually leaks, when it heats up, it expands and doesn't leak anymore. Right now, it's about thirty percent efficient. A new gas boiler would be about ninety percent efficient. The state is requiring that it be replaced, that we actively be pursuing certain replacement options. The station itself is required to be kept at a certain level of warmth fifty five degrees, I believe is the number. There are a number of different departments, not just the fire department that uses it, the fire department does have their vehicles, they do use the upstairs where the the rooms are there for when it was manned for training as well. FEMA has a mutual aid equipment there, our city's emergency management stores their items there, city actually stores the fancy fixtures from downtown, they store them there, so they're not at the D P W where they could get hit by some of the vehicles. Other options were looked into to see if they were. Options to rent or lease in the area was focused on the city of Gardner, seeing pieces of emergency equipment, we need quick access to it. There was very limited feasible places, they all didn't have the size, or there was no space available for the most part. There was the old mining key building on Donovan Street that was looked into, cost of rental there was per month was just shy of five thousand dollars per month, it was, it was like four thousand seven hundred fifty dollars a month. And those those other spaces do not include any space for those other departments that do utilize the South Gardner building. Otherwise, the building is in sound shape. As some information was given us that the new roof was done, a new roof was done in two thousand and five, the overhead doors were replaced in two thousand and nineteen. Building Commissioner Ron Jean was in the Finance Committee meeting this evening, he said the building is in sound, sound shape, and would recommend investing in the new heating system. The Finance Committee voted three oh, three nothing to go forward with the order appropriating free cash to the fire, South Gardner Fire Station abate and design project account. And I so, I move the order.
Okay. Motion made by Counselor General Lawrence, seconded by Counselor Ron Cormier to approve the order. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Walsh.
Yes, I've got a problem with this one. Essentially, what we've got at the South Gardner Fire Station is a glorified storage locker. It's not being used, and the only reason it needs to maintain a fifty five degree. Heating level is because it, the FEMA requires it for, as I understand it anyway, FEMA requires it for storage of its equipment. And for the storage of its equipment, FEMA pays us the glorious sum of one thousand five hundred dollars per year. And it seems to me, and I think it's important to understand that this appropriation doesn't buy. The equipment to replace the boiler, it just abates the asbestos that's that's associated with the existing boiler and pays for a study to design, or not, it pays for a design. Of a new heating system. So we can anticipate that an additional tens of thousands of dollars will be coming down the road for purchase and installation of the newly designed heating system for this facility. It it's amazing to me that FEMA requires us to keep the equipment at a certain temperature, but does not. Compensate us adequately for the cost of that maintenance. I have a problem, this is just the first step in a. Tens of thousands of dollar project that I think is poorly spent on a storage locker. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Matt.
Thank you, Madam President. I actually am in favor of this, because if we were to rent a place for fifty seven thousand dollars a year. We would be spending more money than we would just doing the furnace renovation, which would should pay for itself within a year. So I think this is more cost effective for the city, and especially where the building inspector said that the building is of sound. You know, condition that we can do this. If you look at the current cost to heat the building and to maintain it, I believe it's about five thousand dollars a year, because we receive that fifteen hundred dollars. You know, the solar helps to pay for the overall utilities of that building. So I personally think for the citizens, I think they're getting more bang for their buck to invest the money in a heating system than look to rent a building that the city does not own for, which I think is an exorbitant amount of money. Maybe, you know, in hindsight, this, you know, when they built the fire department or police department, putting on an addition at that time for storage would have been, you know, more efficient, but that did not occur. So I think we have to work with what we have and invest the city's money wisely. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mac. Further discussion? Counselor Boone.
Thank you, Madam President. I I was thinking, you know, we've got Prospect Street School that is being heated right next door. Why couldn't FEMA equipment be put there? And I I kind of agree with with Counselor Walsh, and and also agree with the Finance Committee that the building seems to be sound. But it won't be long, we're gonna have Prospect so Prospect empty, Waterford empty. I don't know how full Hellamay solder is, so we've got buildings to store glorified lockers, as Counselor Walsh pointed out. So I I, at this time, I don't think we should spend the money either. We should, we should consider other options, may maybe later on we do, but if we have to keep FEMA's equipment at fifty five degrees, we'll bring it over to Prospect. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Tyros.
Thank you, Madam President. Another factor that I'll be considering in my vote is for this particular money to be spent, the cost of asbestos, I would wager, isn't going to be going down to abate. Unfortunately, it's a cost I think we'll have to absorb this time. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Ron Cormier.
Yeah, this is not only storage of of items, it's also storage of vehicles, pretty difficult to put vehicles inside the school building. I suspect, I believe we keep an auxiliary fire engine there as a, one of the vehicles that's maintained, as well as the several other city vehicles.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Mayor Nicholson.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to add clarification to the questions that have been asked, we do store a fire engine that does have a water truck on it in this facility, and the FEMA equipment is actually three trailer vehicles that are in there that all require garage door. Access to wheel in and out, because they are vehicles with, some are trailer hitchers, some are full vehicles with engines themselves, that do require garage doors to wheel in and out and utilize in those circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson. Further discussion? Counselor Walsh.
Yeah, for the second time, I I just want to clarify one thing, it's been suggested that this project will pay for itself within a year. However, all we're paying for it right now is design. We don't know what the cost of the of the equipment that is called for by the design as yet, so it's really difficult to know how long it will take for this, for the cost of the entire project to be paid for, if it is at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll. Counselor Boone.
No.
Counselor Boudreaux.
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor General Lawrence.
Yes.
Counselor He.
Yes.
Counselor Matt.
Yes.
Counselor Tyros.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
No.
President.
Yes.
Eighty, two names. Motion passes. Item one zero six zero six, an order appropriating thirty thousand dollars from free cash to Uptown Rotary Improvements account. Report from the Finance Committee. Counsel Counselor Ron Cormier.
Finance Committee discussed this with the mayor and the city engineer also. As we're all aware, the state is in the process of. If we we were responsible for the design of the of the project, but the Uptown Rotary, if you will, it's a transportation improvement project, which. Because we are only responsible for the design, it's a great cost saving for the city, the actual construction will be done by the state. However, to proceed with this, there are two slivers of land, if you will, up there, that there's a question as to the ownership. We assume that the city does own them, but we don't actually physically own a deed. And the state will not proceed with this until we do so. So the steps involved are for us taken by eminent domain, and to put the. Appraised value, assessed value of thirty thousand dollars in escrow for a year until. In in the event somebody would come out of the woodworks, shall we say, and and claim ownership. We believe the city has been the owners of this since long even before the rotary was there, but through. Misalignments or changes and and things, we've all seen, you will all have maps of it, and there are all slivers of this. So in order to proceed with this, and we do the taking a little bit later, we have to appropriate the thirty thousand to put in escrow, so I so moved.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor General Lawrence to pass the order. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Walsh.
As I understand it, assuming as Counselor Cormier suggests that nobody claims ownership and the money is not used to pay anybody for this taking, it will fall into. Free cash at some later day, I I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
You're correct, thank you for reminding me of that.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Boone.
Thank you, Madam President. Do we have a say in the design, because I certainly hope it won't be like the rotary that they did last time. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Boone. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll. Counselor Boone.
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux.
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor General Lawrence.
Yes.
Counselor He.
Yes.
Counselor Matt.
Yes.
Counselor Tyros.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
And President. Yes. Yeah, can you? Motion passes. Communications, item one zero six zero seven, a measure accepting mass general law one forty, section one thirty nine C waiver of dog license fees for individuals aged seventy years or older. Report from the Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Counselor General Lawrence.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee met on this also this evening, this is a indication from actually from myself and the mayor concerning, as you said, the acceptance of section one thirty nine C is chapter one forty of the general laws. What this would, check section one thirty seven of chapter one forty, requires dogs to be annually registered in every city or town. Our current dog licensing keys are in chapter three twelve of the code of City Gardner. This section was accepted by the council, then section one thirty nine C, those, these license fees would be waived for all residents who are seventy years age or older, turns out to be that calendar year. During the COVID nineteen pandemic, people have turned to companionship with their pets, as they spend more time at home. Residents aged seventy and older tend to become more, tend to become more isolated, as they were at a heightened risk during the pandemic. Combat this, some purchase animals such as dogs, and this waiver of the fee is a way to alleviate some of the the financial concerns for an age group that's primarily on a fixed income. As outlined in the letter, there's approximately three hundred sixty dogs licensed, that will be licensed, excuse me, in the city in two thousand and twenty two, that would fall under being owned by someone seventy years age or older. So the financial impact of this vote would have the range of four thousand to five thousand five hundred dollars. These residents would still be required to license their animals, which they fill the form, check a box saying that they're over a certain age, provide the vaccination documentation. They'd still be required to pay any kind of late fees, if they did not license a dog, just the initial fee of eleven or fifteen dollars, depending if the dog is spayed or neutered, would be waived. As stated, this is a way to make a difference in a sizable demographic in the city, with a small effect on our annual budget, which is in excess of seventy million dollars. I I move to accept messages, it's general laws. Well, one forty, section one thirty nine C waiver of dog license for individuals aged seventy years or older. Thank you.
Motion made by Counselor General Lawrence, seconded by Counselor Ron Cormier to second, I'm sorry, seconded by Counselor Ron Cormier to accept the measure. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Walsh.
As someone who might benefit from this, the passage of this, or the acceptance of this act, I will be abstaining from its vote.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll. Counselor Boone.
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux.
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor General Lawrence.
Yes.
Counselor He.
Yes.
Counselor Matt.
Yes.
Counselor Tyros.
Yes.
And President. Yes. Nine eight. Motion passes. Item one zero six zero eight, in order of taking for a parcel of land located at the. Item one zero six zero eight, in order of taking for a parcel of land located at the intersection of Central Street, Woodland Avenue, Green Street, and Pearl Street, commonly known as Parcel Two of the Uptown Rotary. Report from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is favorable. The uh money would have passed a little bit earlier. Uh, I so move uh the order of taking.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor General Lawrence to pass the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll. Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Lawrence?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Ma?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Kedden's gift? Yes. Ten yeas. Motion passes. Petitions, applications, communications, et cetera. Item one zero six zero nine, an application by the Witch's Wardrobe for license to deal in secondhand articles. Report from the Public Safety Committee, Counselor Craig Cormier?
Uh, yes, move to refer to the Safety Committee for a study and report.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Craig Cormier, seconded by Counselor Tyros to refer to the Public Safety Committee. Is there a discussion on the motion? Clerk will please call the roll. Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Lawrence?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Ma?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kedden's gift? Yes. Well, ten yeas. Motion passes. Item one zero six zero one, I'm sorry, one zero six one zero, an application by the Witch's Wardrobe for a fortune teller license.
Yes, uh, move to refer to the Safety Committee for a study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Craig Cormier, seconded by Counselor Tyros to refer to the Public Safety Committee for further study and report. Is there a discussion on the motion? Clerk will please call the roll. Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Lawrence?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Ma?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kedden's gift? Yes. Well, ten yeas. Motion passes. Item one zero six one one, an open meeting law complaint filed by Scott Joseph Graves. I would just like to note on this that the proposed response in our packet is a draft and that is why it's not signed. I put it in our packet for discussion purposes only. So if anyone has anything that they would like to add, subtract, or change about the proposed response, then we have the opportunity to do so this evening during our discussion. And also, the law department has reviewed the response. Is there a motion? Counselor General Lawrence?
I move to approve the proposed response.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor General Lawrence, seconded by Counselor Tyros to approve the proposed response. Is there a discussion on the motion? Counselor Walsh?
Yes, I, I'm gonna vote in favor of the motion. Uh, I question whether this was a violation at all in the first place since i- in the correspondence that's complained of. Uh, it is specifically stated that the correspondence will be included uh on the uh uh in the materials for an open public meeting, and in fact, it was uh included in those materials. But nonetheless, uh, the, I think the response is appropriate and it covers the pro- the topic properly, and I will support it.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll. Counselor Boone?
No.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Lawrence?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Ma?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Kedden's gift? Yes. Eight nine yeas, one nay. Motion passes. Reports of standing committees, Appointments Committee, item one zero five nine five, the measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Ethan Colladney to the position of Assistant City Solicitor for term expiring January third, twenty twenty-three. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. The Appointments Committee met with Mr. Clonie and the mayor and discussed his service to the city as Assistant City Solicitor since July twenty twenty-two, where he's advised at union negotiations, ordinance reviews, and legal opinions on matters, but before the city. The mayor reported that Mr. Clonie has performed very well. Mr. Clonie has indicated that he very much enjoys working for the city. The committee voted unanimously to recommend, therefore, I move that the appointment be certified.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor Mack to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion on the motion? Counselor Boone?
Madam President, for so many years, we had a single city solicitor that would work for the city and can do everything that was needed to get things done. Today, we, we farm things out a lot. So it is still my belief that the city does not need an assistant on top of a full-time city solicitor, when indeed, we end up farming out much of the work. So that I'm gonna be voting against this motion. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Walsh?
Yes, I'm gonna vote in favor of the confirmation uh in response to Counselor Boone's suggestion that uh a lot of the work gets farmed out. That simply is not my experience and uh, we've had an Assistant City Solicitor uh going back to when Tony Penske was City Solicitor and he had, he had an assistant and this ordinance was passed more than twenty years ago. And uh having served for four years as a city solicitor, I can verify that the work uh the city uh requires of the law department uh is certainly sufficient and probably more than, more than sufficient to require the, the services of an assistant, and I'm happy to support the confirmation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll. Counselor Boone?
No.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Lawrence?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Ma?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Uh, President Kedden's gift? Yes. Six nine yeas, one nay. Motion passes. Unfinished business, there are, there is no unfinished business or matters for reconsideration. Moving into new business, Counselor Heath?
Um, no new business. I'd just like to give a shout out to the uh DPW. I hear that the uh I hear that the roads are really bad at home. I'm not there right now. So I just wanna go ahead and give a shout out to them. I got a couple uh messages um about the sanding of the roads and it's been actually a lot of positive um couple little things that I'm gonna go ahead and email them about. However, it's been positive. So, no new business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Tyros?
Nothing new this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor General Lawrence?
I have nothing else to say this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Mack?
I just want to echo what uh Counselor Heath said as the Sander truck went by about ten minutes ago while we were meeting. So, and I also appreciate, Madam President, for you having this meeting tonight on Zoom in consideration of everybody's safety. Um, I'd also like to take the opportunity um on a sad note to express my condolences to the family and friends and former swimmers of Coach Don Lemieux. Um, through my work at the high school, I have had the opportunity for many years to work with the swimmers uh that he impacted and have full knowledge of the amount of D one scholarship money that these sc- these uh student athletes received under his tutelage. Um, I don't think any of us will really know the full impact that he had on, on these, the lives of the swimmers, not only with the Greenwood program, but the young ladies and, and the men that he coached at, through Gardner High School. He brought to Gardner High School sixteen state championships, something that will probably never happen again, but along with those championships, he brought great pride and notoriety, notoriety to the city um into the small gardener pool that trains Olympians and um people who won, you know, medals throughout the state. Um, I just, I just have to say, not only did he help the swim program, he volunteered with the football program for many years, helping them to do um uh strength and conditioning. And on behalf of um the City of Gardner, I would like to make a motion that we send a letter of condolence uh condolences to his family. Um, he will be greatly missed. Uh, you know, not only for the City of Gardner, for the future of the Greenwood Pool in uh what it should be. Thank you, Madam President.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, seconded by Counselor Boudreaux to send a letter of condolence to Don Lemieux's family. Is there a discussion on the motion? Counselor Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I couldn't say it better than Counselor Mack. Um, Don Lee Lemieux was certainly a true gardener, right? He did so much for the city, so much for uh every program that he got involved in. Surely be missed. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Counselor Mack.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll. Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Lawrence?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
A definite yes.
Counselor Ma?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kedden's gift? Yes. Ten yeas. Motion passes. Counselor Craig Cormier?
I have no new city council business. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm getting my exercise, getting the light back on every now and then. Uh, but other than that, no new business. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Boudreaux?
I would like to echo the sentiments of my fellow counselors on the DPW's performance this winter thus far and also ask that the citizens at home be patient with the sideways, with the sidewalk clearing that it's been a very, very icy winter. There are some Christmas trees under there. It's been ice on top of ice on top of ice, and those sidewalk augers aren't always as reliable as we wish they could be. So just be friendly, be kind, and be patient, and a huge thank you to the DPW and all the first responders that have been working around the clock with these winter storms. And that is all this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Boudreaux. Counselor Walsh?
Nothing new this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ron Cormier?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier. Uh, certainly echo the sentiments of Counselor Mack. I think it's wonderful that we are sending a letter of condolence to Coach Lemieux's family. Remember definitely all the times in high school with uh the Greenwood Swim Team, uh state championships and the parades and them getting their picture taken at the chair and just all the hard work they put in, all the things that they learned from Coach Lemieux. He was a definite standout a member of this community, um, considering all the influence that he had on so many generations of swimmers and uh football players and just families. So um, you know, it's a huge loss for the city. He's definitely uh going to be a legend uh forever. He was a living legend, um, and he'll certainly can continue that um in um that legacy. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn after the closing prayer. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Oh, second.
Motion made by Counselor Boudreaux, seconded by Counselor Craig Cormier. The clerk will call the roll. Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Lawrence?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Ma?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kedden's gift? Yes. Ten yeas. Motion passes. Please rise for the closing prayer. Almighty Father, who sees over all
as we adjourn, we take thee for the opportunity of joint deliberation.
As witness during the course of this meeting.
Blessed are we, gathered here.
And the people who represent us, we are. And you have the right to come to welfare until our next meeting. Amen.
The meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, everyone.